Good morning, everyone. The Office of Senator Amanda Shelton now convenes this public hearing. In accordance with the open government law, notices were first sent to the media on Tuesday, February 26th, and again on Friday, March 1st. For the record, today is Wednesday, March 6th, and the time now is 10:13 a.m. The committee will hear and accept testimony, both oral and written, on the following: Resolution Number 36-35-COR, introduced by myself, Amanda L. Shelton, Rayjean Bisco-Lee, and Senator/Speaker Tina Rose Munya-Barnes, relative to expressing Iminei Trenthai Singul Nala Heslatour in Guam’s unwavering support for the payment of war claims to our Manamku and the support of Congressman Michael Siniklas’ HR 1141, as well as Governor Lou Leon Guerrero in finding an administrative solution to authorizing the U.S. Department of Treasury to begin issuing war claim payments. I’d like to thank my colleagues for joining me at the hearing today. To my right, Senator Rayjean Bisco-Lee and Senator Kelly Marsh Titino; and to my left, Senator James Moylan Sizouas Mossi. So we have some who have signed in to testify today or who are here in support, and I’d like to especially recognize our war survivors who are here today, joining us in the public hearing room: Rose Diaz, Rosa Quito, Agnes Perez Anpinko, Vasanti G. Arceo, Jesusa R. Arceo, Rita Franquez, and Mr. Jose U. Garrido. Sizouas Mossi to all of you for joining. So written testimony may be read, and any lengthy testimony should be summarized to about five minutes. Testimony shall be confined to the substance or the nature of the resolution being heard today. There will be no debate or rebuttal, and individuals will be allowed to present oral testimony only once. When speaking, please ensure that the microphone is on and you’re speaking into the microphone, and we ask that the individual state their name for the record. Now I’d like to call on anyone who signed in for testimony today to please come up. I believe Mr. Garrido? Yes, please join us. And I’ll begin with an opening statement on Resolution 36-35. We are celebrating the 75th anniversary of liberation this year, and our Manamku have been waiting and fighting for war claims all this time. This resolution expresses our continued support for the fight and hope that a congressional or administrative solution may finally bring resolution. On November 15th, 1945, Congress passed Public Law 79224, the Guam Meritorious Claims Act. This act authorized the Secretary of the Navy to adjudicate and settle claims for a period of only one year for property damage occurring on Guam during the Japanese occupation. The period for filing a claim began after May 6th, 1946, and ended on December 1st, 1946. This gave residents of Guam a little more than six months to file a claim at a time when Guam was still devastated by the war and occupation, and people were still struggling to simply survive. On January 8th, 1947, the Secretary of the Navy appointed a three-member committee to evaluate the Navy’s handling of its reconstruction and rehabilitation responsibilities on Guam and American Samoa, and to submit its report containing recommendations for improvement. Dr. Ernest M. Hopkins, former president of Dartmouth College, chaired this committee. The Hopkins Committee was critical in its findings and determined that the Navy’s process of settlement and payment was too slow. The committee recommended several changes in both the claim statute and Navy recommendations on this matter, but many of the committee’s recommendations were not adopted by Congress. The U.S. signed the Treaty of Paris with Japan in 1951, waiving its reparation claims against Japan, which included claims made by a people of all its territories, making the U.S. responsible for paying the claims. The Department of Defense challenged the right of the people of Guam to war claims in the 1950s because, and I quote, “general counsel opinion to the effect that the people of Guam prior to the passage of the Organic Act were not citizens of the United States.” On July 1st, 1971, the U.S. enacted Public Law 92-39, the Micronesian Claims Act, which gave World War II compensation to the people of the Pacific Trust Territories, the Northern Mariana Islands, Micronesia, Palau, and the Marshall Islands. This despite the fact that the people of the Trust Territories were not citizens of the United States, the previous objection of the federal government. Beginning in 1977, Guam congressional delegates Antonio Juan Pat, Ben Blas, Robert Underwood, and Madeline Bordalio proposed legislative action in Congress for the U.S. to provide war claims and justice to the people of Guam who suffered under the Japanese occupation during World War II. A total of 14 congressional bills were introduced into Congress to resolve war claims through the years. In the 101st U.S. Congress in 1990, Guam had a golden opportunity to resolve war claims through HR 2024. That was the first time where Congress had bipartisan effort to jointly develop a substitute resolution on war claims for Guam. Congress sent a request to the Guam Legislature, seeking its support through resolution. The Guam Legislature, however, never officially responded to Congress. While war claims were finally approved by Congress in 2016, in the 2016 National Defense Authorization Act, the Department of Treasury is requiring additional language to release war claim payments. Congressman Michael Siniklas introduced HR 1141 to add the U.S. Treasury Department’s requested appropriation language. He subsequently introduced HR 1365 to resolve this issue through the House Natural Resources Committee instead of the Appropriations Committee, a process which advisers have said may be a faster route to war claims payments. With Resolution 36-35, we are sending a united voice to the federal government to finally pay war claims to our survivors. By sending this resolution to Congress and all relevant stakeholders in the federal government, we are expressing our united desire to seek justice and closure on this painful chapter of our island’s history. So now we’ll begin receiving testimony. Mr. Garrido and anyone who wishes to come up and testify may do so.
Good morning. My name is Jose U. Garrido. I am a young World War II survivor. I was born during the Japanese occupation in 1944, and I survived the U.S. invasion to recapture Guam. And I was glad that I survived the war, although there are a lot of other Manamku here who actually suffered more just because they have already attained the age of comprehension that there is war all around them. While I was a baby, I could have been killed without knowing what war is. In any case, I want to say and qualify my testimony today that I feel like I’m representing... Maybe silence is my testimony. I thought I would be able to... When we speak about this, our history, by the way, I fully support the resolution, and I fully support whatever the government, the legislature, and the governor, Governor Lou Leon Guerrero, and Congressman, Mr. Siniklas, to do whatever it takes to find resolution to this issue about our war reparation. I’m not completely satisfied with the settlement that had been settled, and I know that there have been a lot of conversation with regards to the manner in which this war reparation is to be compensated, i.e. through the Section 30 money. I am probably one of a few people who think that that became so because we had no other choice. We have actually reached the point where we have to do whatever it takes to conclude the war reparation of our people. I don’t necessarily disagree that we should use the Section 30 money. What bothers me a lot is that there’s less conversation with regards to the disqualification of our entire family who have passed away before December 2016. I can’t find in my heart to accept that kind of settlement. And I think that what I’m getting to is that our people, this legislature and this government, and Guam should just find some other solution to include those that have passed away and were disqualified based on this settlement. My entire family, for instance, have passed away before 2016 or 2015, the people that actually really suffered through the war, but they were disqualified because they died before the settlement was settled. That’s one of the issues that I’d like to bring. I know, I believe you mentioned, Senator, Ms. Chairman, Chairwoman. You mentioned that there shouldn’t be any rebuttal, and I’m not here to rebut the resolution, but just to express that maybe, just maybe, I am representing also my family, my grandparents, my mother passed away, and so many thousands who have passed away that will not be compensated based on this settlement. We gotta find a way, and it’s not going to end with my testimony because that would be my lifelong pursuit, is to bring justice to our people. And one of that, and this justice is really something that has been being pursued since the end of World War II. Quite frankly, many of our people today, even the people that are here, World War II’s not over yet. We’re still struggling with it. I’m very young, and I don’t purport to be a spokesman of all the war, World War II survivors here. I’m pretty sure that they suffered more than me, but I too could have died because of the war environment that creates hardship. In Maningun, for example, the march to Maningun, and our four-year in Mata Talafufo, it was hard, and we basically survive on nothing but subsistence. That’s the thing is, my issue is that, yes, Section 30 will be used because we’re basically forced to do it, and yes, it looks like we’re paying ourselves with our own money, but if that’s the honor that we can give to our people who really deserve this war reparation and for it, but I am asking the legislature that in the future, should there be any time, as soon as possible, to come up with some kind of a resolution that those that are forgotten in this settlement be also included in the war reparation because they are in fact victims of war? And it’s not our families’ fault that they passed away before this settlement was It’s hard for me to talk about this. Every time I talk about this, I remember all the hardship. I remember even my young sister who was just waiting to be... We built a casket for her. I’m just glad she didn’t die, but it’s those untold stories that really hurts. Maybe by crying a little this morning, the people that I represent in speaking today, at least they have someone to speak for them, because they can’t speak for themselves. I’m sorry. Anyway, if I could just change a little bit of the language here, I don’t necessarily like to use the word “payment.” I like to use the word “reparation,” and I like to use the word “compensation,” and so that could be interchangeable as this language throughout the context of the resolution, that the Chamorro people actually deserve war reparation, and that perhaps we, throughout the context, wherever there is the word “payment,” that either “reparation” be used or “compensation.” Actually, war reparation is a human right, and a human right is something that a human deserves without anybody giving it to them, the same as your human right. All people have human rights. One of them here is that the human right of war reparation of our people is that they are innocent victims of war, and I’m glad that we’re trying to find the solution of the World War II war reparation of our people, and I fully support this resolution. Hopefully, like I’ve been repeating, that those that we are going to forget will actually not be forgotten and find some other law that this legislature can pass to remember those that were disqualified so that they could also receive compensation, even if they had passed away. It’s the right thing today, and thank you. You know, at the pain of repeating myself, I thank you very much for having this resolution this morning.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garrido, for your very moving testimony, and I know that this is a topic that evokes a lot of emotion in our people, and I want to thank you for your courage today to come and testify here in support of the resolution, and also for your lifelong fight for your family and for our people and for yourself to receive this compensation. So, Sizouas Mossi, any comments or questions from my colleagues, from Mr. Garrido? Senator Titino?
My name is Sizouas S. Garrido. I want to add to what Senator Shelton has said and just say, Sizouas Mossi, for all the years that I know that you’ve stood up for yourself, your family, for the Chamorro people, for what’s right, that’s so important, and it hasn’t always been easy. Sometimes it’s been a bit against the tide, and it’s taken a lot of commitment, sacrifice, and bravery to do some of those things, so truly, I thank you for that. And I agree that you make very good points. I myself have not liked the fact that it’s Section 30 money because it does feel like instead of the responsibility being squarely taken on by the federal government, it’s us paying ourselves for money that was already coming to the people of Guam. And so I think that’s an important point, but I also am so appreciative of the point that you made, that the people of Guam, the war survivors, they deserve the dignity to finally be treated in an equal or same manner as others who went through similar sufferings. That is long, long overdue, and it’s true that the war is still alive for so many because the payment hasn’t been to the families yet, excuse me, the war reparations haven’t been to the families yet who are surviving. So many have passed away. Lands still aren’t with families that were taken after the war. There’s still so much to rectify for all the wrongs. And I want to add to all of the important points that you made, and I don’t know if there’s a place for it in this resolution, but maybe in another resolution. I think that the war survivors and the people of Guam, and all of the families that have been affected, that they deserve an apology, an apology for this taking so long, for so many having passed away, and for not being properly defended in the first place. So I’d like to put that out there. It may not be the place this time to put it into this resolution, but maybe we can think among my colleagues about putting together a resolution that calls for an apology, because I think that’s only right. Sizouas Mossi?
Senator, thank you very much. I put a couple of points that I just forgot to mention, but it’s really significant in the resolution that there were 3,000 people that have filed, but there were 21,000 people on Guam during World War II. 3,000 out of the 21,000, more or less. That’s really a significant record here, and we should never forget that, that that’s 18,000 more people that will not be getting any war reparation. One more fact, a recommendation, I know that I’ve not heard this before, but in that 5% administrative cost, I would hope that the intention in bringing up that 5%... My suggestion is that 5% should not be applicable to the war reparation of the Chamoros. In other words, don’t touch that war reparation. Find that 5% payment for administrative costs somewhere else. The other thing is that I’d like to recommend, if it’s not already, that the war reparation is actually similar to a combat pay, if you can draw that logic, that people in combat get their pay and they’re not taxed, that Chamorro people are in fact in a combat zone, so that war reparation should not be taxable. Don’t tax that. It’s non-taxable payment of war crimes, and everyone should be compensated who are here. I guess that would be... Thank you for allowing me to mention that.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Garrido, and I know what you’re referring to is in the Congressman Siniklas’ bill, the 5%, so yes, we’ll make note of that and share that with him as well. Senator Bisco-Lee?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and Sizouas Mossi, Senor Garrido, for sharing your... for having the courage to share your story and to speak for those who are not here today. We very much appreciate hearing from you, and I think that this whole experience, especially in the last few years with the NDAA passing and then us going through this process, it has been challenging and has been difficult for many of us to kind of relive those stories through our Manamku, through our Saina, to have them come and have to fill out documents. I know many senators opened up their offices, the congresswoman opened up her office, to receive some of these folks, to help them, to assist them to file these claims, and that in and of itself was another very painful process, were reopening wounds that have been hidden away and, I guess, that people haven’t spoken about for many years. But I will share in my personal experience, the silver lining for our family was that we had the opportunity to have these conversations with my grandmother because she’s still with us, and to learn about that part of her and to learn about, you know, the reasons why she is the way she is today, and a lot of... Just the opportunity to hear some of what she’s gone through and to really be able to... and to really be able to value and appreciate her while she's with us. And so I think that just hearing from you and hearing your family's story and your family's pain, it makes it really challenging for us. But I think that moving forward with this resolution and with the measures that are being put forth by our congressman in Congress and also the, the movement from our, the administrative, the executive branch from our governor and lieutenant governor, all working together, all pushing forward with one voice, I think is important. One, I'm really glad that you had the opportunity to share your thoughts with us about the non-taxable payment. And that's one of the amendments that I would like to include in this, in this bill or in this resolution. Another one, and I know you had mentioned it before, you kind of have blanket support for this resolution, whatever it takes to move us forward. So this resolution notes the congressman's first bill, which is H.R. 1141, but it does not include H.R. 1365. So you don't have any, you're, you're in support of including any measure that would move us forward. Is that correct?
Right. Any measure to move this along and I, I guess I'm leaving it up to the people that are pushing this to do the right thing. And, and and bring this to a closure, even though I know that the only way to close this history is for all of us to pass away. And therefore, that part of Guam history will then close because there will be no one else alive to tell that World War II story of surviving, you know. It will never be resolved. There's still too many of us alive.
Sutuus Massey, Mr. Garrido, I also want to thank all of the Manoumku, all of our Saina who are here, all of our survivors who are here today. Even just by your presence, you, you help us to move forward with this. I also just want to make mention in support of what Senator Kelly Taitino and what Senator Shelton had mentioned before. There are other groups out there that had similar pain, not exactly the same. They weren't, were not, they did not have, they were not interned in their own land. They did not have to endure the occupation for the entire war in the way that the people of Guam did. But you know, there are groups out there like the Korean Comfort Women, like World War II Filipino veterans, like the Japanese Americans who were interned during the war. And all of these groups, several of these groups have been already recognized in the way that you were, that had been mentioned previously. So I think we, there is a pathway for us to continue to have these conversations. And I agree with you that this isn't the best solution, but it is what we have. And so I'm in support of this resolution. I'm in support of moving forward. But I really just want to thank you for coming forward today and sharing your story. I think it takes a lot of courage and I think that you certainly speak for a lot of people who have gone before us but are, who are also here, but not, unable to speak, unable to come down here to the Congress Building and share their stories. So I just really want to thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Garrido.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Senator Biskoly. Senator Moylan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Garrido, thank you for your presentation today. Thank you for opening your heart. As you spoke, I can picture what you were saying as an infant and what your parents must have had to go through, surviving the war and, and taking care of their child. It's, it's, it was very difficult, but they did well. You're, you're here today. You survived because of their strength. I remind, it's reminding me of my stories that my mother would tell me as well. She was part of the Meningan March. But I can, I can picture all the suffering that can, people went through. But we're strong. We're resilient. The Chamorro people are, are survivors. And this body, this 35th Guam Legislature are united to make ensure that we and your voices are heard. Your family's voices are heard, the people of Guam's voices are heard, the survivors are heard, all the way from our congressman to our governor to this body. So I do truly appreciate what you're doing and voicing your concerns. And I hear you in my heart. So thank you, Mr. Garrido. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Moylan, and thank you very much, Mr. Garrido. Thank you for being here today and for your testimony. We have someone else who wishes to testify, Ms. Vicky Gair. Please come up.
First of all, I would like to thank you, Senator Lee, Senator Shelton, Senator Moylan, for being here. Out of the 15 that you were able to make the time to come. It really is important, I think. And I really hope that the other senators that aren't here today, that couldn't make it for one reason or another, really listen to this because there's some important things that he brought up that I would like to also speak about. However, I have some questions. Would it be possible if I ask you some questions before I continue with my testimony? One of my questions is, how is it that the U.S. government, I'm told, is this correct, that they told Japan they didn't have to do the reparations? And so America was going to make the reparations? How did this happen? Can someone explain that to me?
Yes. In my opening statement, I mentioned about the Treaty of Peace with Japan in 1951, which waived the reparation claims against Japan, which included claims made by people of all its territories, making the U.S. responsible for paying these claims.
Okay. So they probably felt bad about what they did in Hiroshima and they decided to take on the debts. That's good. People of Guam, you know, suffered greatly. I'd like to also say that my father, well, my mother's, I'll start out, my mother's fiance was from Los Angeles. He died here on Guam, fighting the Japanese. And his best war buddy was my father, who'd never met my mother then. And he asked him, when he was dying, to take care of my mother and go back. So I would not have been born if it wasn't for World War II. It's very strange how it all happened. But my father was injured from shrapnel and burning oil when they had to jump the ship when the cannons from the Japanese shot the ship he was on. And a lot of emotional scars, extremely a lot. And I asked him before I'd ever come to Guam myself as a child, but he used to always use a little bomb, a bombshell from Guam. He always said, "That's from Guam," for his ashtray. And that was my earliest childhood knowledge about Guam. It's a bombshell from, and he never forgot, I don't think a day ever went by that he didn't remember the horrors of what he experienced here during the war, fighting to liberate Guam from the Japanese. And he had post-traumatic stress before it was ever called that. And there was no kind of help from the government. When I was a child, we didn't have food every day in America when he got back and married my mother because he was going through a lot of after-war, post-war stress from what he'd experienced while he was fighting here and in Saipan and in Corregidor. But there's no reparations for, he's dead. He died in about 2002. But he had scars on his body from what he experienced on Guam. I was a child. I remember seeing him. My parents got divorced because he had this post-traumatic stress problem from the war. So there's also, I just want everybody to know that, you know, people in America who are paying this also, we are also suffered from this war. I mean, but I'm, I'm a Gomranian. I've lived here for 46 years on Guam and voted that long here for you. And I really would like to support this bill, of course. And I would like to thank Senator, Congressman San Nicholas for finally getting this through and hopefully we can get this now. There's so few left alive. And I do not fault Congresswoman Bernalio for not accepting the terms that John McCain wanted here to accept, which was not to give anything to the children of the survivors when they did not live anymore. So I, I do think that she did her best and I don't want to fault her for that, for not accepting those terms which are not acceptable. So I just want now that Congressman San Nicholas can finally make this really happen and happen right because we don't have, former, you know, McCain is no longer going to be blocking it. So thank you, God, for that. We can get this through. I would also like to make a comment as I support this, that, about the tax. I, this is my feeling when you go and write the rest of the rules, that as long as the children of the survivors or the survivors themselves still live on Guam, there should be no tax. Because what they spend will come to Guam and it will go around and help our economy and it will help everybody plus we're paying the congressperson and everybody's wages to get this all done. So as long as they're still living here, there should be no tax. But if they have moved to another location in the mainland or elsewhere, that there should be a tax. So that their share of paying for this to finally come through should be helping our island in some way. So when you could please keep that in mind as you continue finishing up to make this happen. Also, what Mr. Garrido brought up, about 21,000 people that were here and only 3,000 of them filed in a timely fashion to be included. And I'm wondering if there's any way, what about those other 19, I mean, 18,000 people's children, they all suffered too. But they were up in the hills. They didn't know. There's so, I, I know this because my father told me when I asked him, "Don't you think Chamorro women were gorgeous?" And he said, "I never saw them. They were all hiding up in the hills while we were fighting down around the ocean sides." "We only saw a few old ladies that were working in the barracks because they were all hidden as best they could." "It was a dangerous time. This was real. This war was hell." And the people, the survivors, the children, the survivors whose, whose parents have passed already suffered because of the post-traumatic stress their parents went through. And I know this to be true. The people of Guam, when I came 46 years ago, were traumatized people. I was born in 1951. But I know that the kids that were born in the war, they suffered. So many didn't survive because they starved. And the ones that did survive, they, they suffered. But their parents and the mothers who were raped that later on had to raise these children, many of them children of soldiers from Japan, that they had to do what they had to do to survive. They faulted nobody. But those people deserve some of this money because they had to suffer the sins of their parents for being distraught as they were raising them. They were possibly violent towards them. They, they suffered and it was emotional. And that is why that I greatly disagreed with Senator John McCain for, for not wanting to give the children of the people who are no longer living part of the war reparations. So we need to push that. And I know that your time is very valuable and I just again thank the three of you, the only senators that were able to make the time and it was important for you to come. And I, I really thank you.
Thank you very much, Vicky. Thank you for being here today and for sharing your story and your support for this resolution. Colleagues? Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. And I'd also like to recognize Mr. Ben Engoko, another war survivor who came in support of today's hearing and support of this resolution. And again, I want to thank all of the war survivors who joined us today. Many of you didn't come up to testify but who signed in in support of this resolution. We thank you for coming here today, for making the time. Again, for sharing your stories and reliving this very painful time in our history and for being here. And I'd like to thank my colleagues for, for joining me today to listen to the testimony that we have. And we look forward to, to passing this resolution in the March session. So, Sutuus Massey. The Office will continue to receive testimony on all items heard today. Resolution 36-35 for the next 10 days. Please address any written testimony to the Office of Senator Shelton and it may be submitted via electronic mail at officeofsenatorshelton@gwamlegislature.org or hand delivered to the Guam Congress Building at 163 Chalan Santo Papa, Hagatnya, Guam. Thank you again for your attendance and your participation today. This hearing is now adjourned at 10:58 a.m. Sutuus Massey.